All right, here at Conversation with the Keith, we have one contested race in our school board race. Kevin Barnard is looking for District Two. Explain where District Two is first, so that people watching this may know. I don't know if I vote in District Two or not.
District Two, the city of Fowles is actually split down Fourth Street, Main Street. And so I call it the south part of Fowles. From about the railroad track, south, south part, all the way down 27, McKinney'sburg area, Browning's Corner, out 22 toward Bracken, and then Lennoxburg Road is kind of the cutoff.
So that's the northernmost part?
Yes, that is the northernmost part. And so anything on that southeastern part of the county is District Two.
Anything west of 27?
No.
So kind of 27, Lennoxburg is kind of the borders?
Yep, from 27 down to the county line, and then around, around McKinney'sburg and that, that area.
Okay, so now you know whether you're supposed to be voting in this district or not. And if you're not, you may not want to spend the next 20, 30 minutes with us. But if you are, we're going to talk a lot about school board issues, school issues, parental issues that people have with school and want to know information about. We've started all of these by simple question. What year did you graduate?
98.
98, and what have you been doing since 1998?
I've been, been doing a lot, but have not been out of this community really since, since then. And so I have been in, living on Maple Avenue since 2005. Moved back in here from Spencer Time in Lennoxburg. And I've been doing some church ministry in various local churches here. It's kind of where I've been investing in my career and raising the kids here in this community. Been a part of the recreation, the, you know, activities of the community and those kinds of things. So that's where, that's kind of where we are.
Okay, what prompted you to run for school board?
Well, you know, I think as a part, if you invest in part of your community, I think it's important to give back. And I've never really officially been in a role of serving the community in some, in any form really. And so I've been, something has been kind of on my mind about how I can give back in, in the right way, in the, in the best way to do that. And so when this opportunity came, came up, I felt like with my experiences and that this might be a good role for me in order to kind of serve and to be able to be that voice for, for people and, and doing what I can to just partner with what's already going on there in the school system to, to make that, the school system's better. Cause I think as the school system gets better, your community gets better.
Okay, now you have some family history too of service with the school, right?
I do, yes. My mom was a teacher, elementary teacher, and then my dad served on the school board for nine years.
Nine years, okay.
He picked up a, a year term and then, and then two extras, so.
Okay, and Ann and Gary, Chris?
Yes, yeah.
And Gary Barnard. Well, we'll go ahead. Anything else, or we'll go ahead and start talking about?
That'd be good.
Okay, first question, as you see it, what is the role of the school, school board? Kind of in relation to how that's different from the role of the superintendent?
It's, my thing with the school board, it's getting the right people in the right places and letting them use their experiences, your abilities to the best of, you know, of their ability. And so, so, you know, to me, it's not a lot of necessarily hands-on things as much as it is making sure that the right people have the right resources to do the job that they're hired to do. And I'm a firm believer, you get the right people in the right places and, and, and things will go, go well. And that seems to be where things are right now. That as a, from the conversations I have with people and the things I know about the superintendent and Joseph and his, you know, and his ability, what he's bringing to the table, that it seems like it's a really good fit for our school, our community. And so letting him, you know, do the things that he does well and letting him find the people to surround himself with, to do other things. Well, I think that's the key to the school board as I see it.
Yeah.
Is just putting the right people in the right places. And when you get the right people there, then things, then good things begin to happen.
Did you and Michael go to school together? Cause I know you both were in the 90s, right?
Michael.
Uh, not Michael, Joe.
Oh, Joe, yeah.
Yeah, Michael's a brother.
Yes, yeah, right, his younger brother. Yeah, we, we did. He was a year older than I was.
Okay.
But yeah, we, younger, we spent, played baseball together a few years and stuff like that. So yeah, I know. And he's from Lennoxburg area.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
My family, I got some family out there, so.
Okay, all right. One of the big issues especially this past spring is the school safety issue. And of course, the board had heard a lot of information this year about army teachers, about school resource officers, a lot of debate with the fiscal court and Board of Education and Sheriff's Office about school resource officers. So we just wanted to talk, and so many parents are so worried about when they send their kid to school. Probably the number one issue that they worry. I think they trust teachers to educate them, but they're more worried, I think, about. And so just wanted to kind of talk a little bit about school safety, some of the issues going on. Any, any initial thoughts about, you know, where we stand as a country with this abundance of shootings that's going on?
Yeah, it's, it's something that you never expect to deal with. It's something that, it was not a fear that we had when I was in school 20 years ago. You didn't, you didn't have that concern of these types of things going on. And unfortunately, it's something that you would like to just bury your head in the sand and say, it'll never happen here, you know, but you do have to have things in place to prepare for those, for those types of situations. And so I've, I was actually a part of, or attended a board meeting where that was discussed. Some of the things and even conversations that I had outside of that about the school resource officers. And I think, again, it goes back getting the right people in the right places. You know, and I know teachers, you know, they're trained to teach and educate kids. And to carry on the responsibility of trying to protect them, you know, is an added responsibility. And so I think it's very important to partner with local law enforcement to allow them to say, this is the best plan of how to protect our kids, how to protect our schools. And then our responsibility, I believe, is to give them the resources that they need to trust their judgment, to trust their decision of this is the best way to keep our kids safe. And you get their, you know, their input and you do everything you can to give them the resources that they need to protect our kids and our schools. And so I think, I know Craig's been working on that. And, and like you said, the fiscal court and a lot of discussions there. And I know that it's hard with, you know, with the finances and how to fund that, that, but that has to be, that's got to be a main priority. To make sure that we have the resources that we need to keep our kids safe. Because if the kids aren't safe, then that's going to affect the learning and it's going to affect the environment and even affect the parents, you know, and their, their trust of the system. And so again, putting those, the right people in the right places and trusting their plan. I don't know about school safety. I don't know how the, you know, the best way to go about that. But I would trust the input and the advice of the local, the local law enforcement as they say, this is, you know, this is the amount of resource officers we need. This is the type of resource officer that we need and how that all works. I think the more we can partner with them to have a plan, I think the better, the better it is.
Okay, as you talked about finances, and you know, that's one of the things school resource, or the school board looks at. They, they take a proposed budget and they, they kind of determine what is the best route to go. Where, where do you think taking dollars that the school board has to funding school resource officers, where does that fall in the line of priorities?
Well, again, it's got to be a priority because it, school safety does affect learning.
Yeah.
And it affects.
Yeah, if you're sitting there as a student and you're nervous about anything, your attention's not on the teacher.
Right. And I think if you're a teacher and you're concerned not only with focusing on educating the kids, but also if you feel like you have an added responsibility of if this happens, I also have to, you know, have this in the back of my mind. So I think if you can, you know, eliminate that responsibility from our teachers a little bit, to take that off, to allow them to focus on what they are trained to do, what they have, what they have a passion of doing. You know, our local law enforcement, they have a passion for protecting our people. That's their passion. That's what they get up and do every single day. Teachers, they get up to impact kids' lives, to educate kids. That's their passion. And so if you can do both of those things, you know, to take that off. And so I think that it's a priority. I don't think it's something that, I know there's, you know, there's not a lot of funds to just be throwing at things. But as you begin to prioritize, school safety has to, has to move up.
Okay.
To a very important level.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, that may mean taking something from over here in order to fund that, that's more important. Not that this isn't, but without that safety, without that, that trust, without, you know, that, that environment, it doesn't really matter what else you do. If the kids aren't focused and the teachers aren't focused, then really what else is there to accomplish?
Absolutely. I think you kind of answered this without addressing it specifically because you talked about allowing teachers to teach basically. So in that presentation that they would give, there was a presentation on the post program, which was about army staff, not just teachers, but any staff. And allowing them to go through a program that would be set by the school board. So the length of the program would be undetermined. You can't really say five days, 10 days, two months. It might be that, but it would be what the board would turn. What, as you heard that presentation, I'm assuming that's the one you were at. What's your thoughts upon army staff?
Well, I, I know that it's, it can be a divisive issue that people have both opinions on, on those sides of that and completely understand that. I think training is very important. And I, for me, I go back to the, the advice or the input of that local law enforcement or that school resource officer. So you go to them and say, is, would this be a benefit to have this? Whether I personally agree or whether I personally, is this something that you think would benefit? And if it would benefit, what's the best way of going about that?
Gotcha.
Of knowing who is and who isn't, knowing who is trained in that and the training that takes place. Again, I don't know how long that that needs to take place or that training. And so for me, I am, I am not opposed to that. It seems like to me that maybe the more you have, the more instability could create in a certain situation. But if that school resource officer or those local law enforcement say, hey, this would be a good idea if we could train a few staff, that they would be a part of this plan. And if those staff want that responsibility too, that would be an added question of, you know, does this take away from what we have hired them to do?
Gotcha. Now, and to kind of build upon that, some of the magistrates, some of the members of fiscal court has expressed that they feel school safety is a school issue. And they want to see the school district create their own police district. And that the school district would be responsible for training, hiring, training, everything, just like the sheriff's office does. The school district would have their own.
Okay.
There's just, you know, obviously Fayette County and Jefferson County has that because the, the amount of officers they have is so great.
Yes.
Nicholas County is one of them who around this area has, has done that. Initially thoughts upon whether a school district needs to get into the business of having their own police district?
My reaction, school districts are not set up to do that. That's not their purpose. Now, does that need to change? Does there need to be a focus on that? Perhaps down the road. But the school district has been established for education.
Yeah.
That's been the focus. That's been, you know, what the intention, all of that needs to be on the education of our kids.
Yeah.
Right? And so if the kids are safe, but they're not educated, I think that it's, we don't win.
Yeah.
Right? But if we get the education, but they're not safe, you know, it kind of goes back and forth. And so of course.
You gotta do both.
You have to do, you do. And, and I think that it's easy to, to be able to sit in a room and say, well, it would be nice if the school just did their own thing.
Yeah.
That's, that's great. There would be a lot that would have to get initially invested in that. And so you look at it, I don't think that it's necessarily unrealistic to desire that and to move toward that. At the same time, I feel like if you already have a trusted local law enforcement who can partner with the community, which the school is part of the community.
Yeah.
That if you can partner that together, they already have the training. Maybe they just need more resources and, and we need to work together to do that, you know, with like the school resource officers and how all of those things. And so the fiscal court, even though, understand their perspective on, on that, that their responsibility is to make sure that, that the best use of taxpayer dollars is getting you. And I understand that. And, and that might, from a financial standpoint, may look good on paper. I just don't think, at least right now where we are, that, that that is even close to something that we could implement.
Yeah.
Anytime soon. And not to say that it couldn't, but I think, I think to me, the best way is to partner with the local law enforcement. Not to take away from what they, you know, their resources or to pull from that, but to somehow partner together.
And that's kind of what's going on now, where they have two officers that are serving as SRO.
Yes.
Not pulling them off a shift or anything all over there, but that they're there with the specific duties to, to protect the schools.
Yes.
To be there. Not just to protect the schools, but to start building those relationships with kids.
Yes.
And I know David Jones has talked about doing some programs and those kinds of things that he had done at KSP and now doing them to teach the kids.
And I think that's part of being a community. And not that other, not that the Fayette or the Jefferson County are not communities, but what we have here, I think is different.
Yeah.
And so you can't take what works in Louisville or Lexington and apply it to Pendleton County.
Absolutely.
It's a different environment and it is more of a community feel. And so these kids that the school resource officers see in school are, you know, are the ones that they're going to see at ball games and are the ones that they're going to run into at the grocery store or those kinds of things. And so it's bigger than, there are a lot of things that come out of that environment of school resource officers and those relationships that can benefit our community.
Absolutely.
Which is why I think it's great to partner with local law enforcement to, to accomplish those things.
Okay, all right. Kind of moving on to another area, very controversial area. I think as far as parents are concerned and teachers, especially with all the changes going on in Fracford. How do you, what's your view as a parent, more so than anything else right now, of these state testings? You, you went through it. You probably started with portfolios, didn't you?
I did.
They were going to change and solve all the education problems.
They were.
Guess what? They don't even do them now.
And that thick portfolio that I spent so much time on, now in the garbage, yeah, I don't.
Well, we'll say it helped you when you were putting together your startup to learn about the variety.
That is exactly what we'll say.
But, and you know, you were in school when all of this stuff started. So you have a good view of it from that aspect of it. Views on testing?
I, you know, I know that there's different opinions on that. And I know that there are, there can be concerns both ways. That if you're doing testing, that you're just trying to get kids to get a good score so that it looks good on paper and moving. And I know that there are pros and cons to both of those. I think that it is important to have some type of gauge of, of how things are going and what is being accomplished. Is testing the best way to do that? I'm not sure. But again, that comes from a state level. And if they come down and say, you, we're going to, we're going to do portfolios, well then we just, we abide by that. And, you know, we say, okay, if that's what we're going to do, then we do that to the best of our ability, whether we agree or disagree, you know, we, we're not going to fight that.
How much weight will you put in it, put on the state testing on whether Pendleton County schools are doing well or not?
Well, I think that, again, it's a bigger picture because I don't think that test scores necessarily can dictate success or not success.
Okay.
Because I think that there's a lot more that's going on that you can't gauge by a test.
Gotcha.
Okay. So are the kids learning the material? Yeah, maybe that can, can dictate that. But does that dictate how many kids are involved in extracurricular activities? Does that dictate how many kids are, you know, are, are getting job training, you know, to life after the test scores, you know? And so it's really more about how or what we're doing now, not just, yeah, we want to be compliant to what the state demands, yes. But we, that's not our success or unsuccessful. That there may be other factors that are going into that perhaps lower test scores, but more kids involved outside of that, or a higher graduation rate, or, you know, those types of things that are going to benefit our community in the long run. And so, you know, so yeah, there are, there are things like that, like the testing and the evaluation. Those things are going to change. And we can voice our opinions about them. We can voice our concerns about them. Ultimately, that comes from a state level. If they say, this is what we're going to do, then we just have to say, whether we agree or disagree, let's do this to the best of our ability. But let's also make sure that we keep the bigger picture of what this education is about. That it's not just getting a certain score. And that score says, yes, we're doing good, or no, we're not doing good. That, you know, we want to look at other factors in that education and how kids are being impacted. And a lot of that stuff, you can't gauge on a test.
Absolutely.
You know, fill in the bubble.
Absolutely.
Or a portfolio.
Or a portfolio. I was getting very safe face out.
However they want to gauge that, you know, you, you do that to the best of your ability. And, you know, and you do that, but you also understand that 10 years from now, it's going to be something completely different. But are we still impacting our community by the relationships that are getting built in, in that school system?
And a college is not going to ask what their individual test scores were.
No.
When you applied to college, did you have to give a portfolio?
No, they did not. And I'm glad that they did not read some of my, what I thought was my best work, but now it's back, not, not so much, so.
Always enjoyed grading portfolios because it was a couple of days that I got paid to, to not have to be in the classroom and get to read them. And some of them were very entertaining for the quality of their work.
Sure.
And some of them were very taining, very entertaining for the lack of quality of their work.
Well.
I think one of my favorites was the, the young author was writing, not about the Virginia Military Institute. He left off the I in the A. And it was the Virgin Military Institute.
There you go.
So that one cracked me up.
Right, yeah. I can only imagine the things that you came across with those things.
You mentioned extracurricular activities. And that was one of the questions that somebody asked. What's the importance to a kid's total education about a strong extracurricular activity program for the school district, all four schools?
Yeah, so again, and it's not, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of differing opinions about those things. I know that I was involved in a lot of extracurricular activities. I think it prepares you for other things later in life. The things that you learn, the relationships that you build outside of that, that help, can help enhance that. I don't think that it's something that is necessarily mandatory for everyone. I don't think that it may fit everybody's personality or, or everybody's, you know, path or plan for what they're going to be or what they're going to do in life. But I think offering, have, being able to offer things to the kids, being able to offer a variety of extracurricular activities that allow kids to be a part of a group of kids that have something in common. You know, because when you go through your school day, you're in a, you're in a classroom that you may feel like you have nothing in common with these. You may feel excluded. You may feel like, you know, that, that you may not fit in exactly. But when you can find something that you're passionate about, some type of club, some type of activity, and you get around other kids who are excited about the same, it makes you feel like you're a part of something bigger. And so I think to me, that is an avenue that can help perhaps kids that feel excluded or, or kids that feel like they may have nothing to offer. Maybe they, you know, they're not academically, you know, that's not really their, their giftedness. But, but they can, you know, they can be a part of a team or be a part and contribute to a team to make that team better, or contribute to a club and make that club better and, and find that. And that's, I think, what we all do in life, is you find what you're good at, you find what you're passionate, and you join and, and be a part of, whether it's at work, whether it's in your community, whatever it is, and, and you feel like that you're, you're a part of something bigger than just yourself.
And I think it goes back to school safety too, because if you look at all these shooters, they all talk about being excluded. They felt like a lump.
Sure.
They felt like they weren't part. And if you can have them included, whether it's a chess club, a band, ROTC, the multiple sports teams, ski club, whatever, they then feel a part of that. And they don't want to hurt something that they feel they're a part of.
Yeah. And I think that even just from, you know, not that it's the, the save all or the solution to all of those things, but how does that impact even maybe someone who may not exhibit those type of characteristics of violence or things. But even just people who may suffer from things internally that maybe no one else knows about. And it's just, it's just being a part of something. When you feel like you're a part of something, that, that it creates a sense of excitement. It creates a sense of passion. It creates, you know, that, that you want to do good in school because you want to be a part of that, you know? And sometimes that's a motivation for people. The only reason they get good grades is so I can play basketball on Friday night, you know? And so, yeah, I'll put a little more effort into just to make sure that I can be a part of that, that team and be a part of that, that activity. And so I think there's a lot of things that benefit from extracurricular. And I think that that is an important part of the educational system and preparing kids not just to graduate after 12th grade, but now after that, being a part of the community, being a part of wherever they choose to settle and to establish their life.
You talk about, you know, being a part of, of the positivity of being a part of a community. I, I don't know the figures and I don't know what's happened since then with test scores. But I do remember back in 2005, when they went to the state tournament. That was one of the best years of test scores we had. There were so much positive going on in that building that it just raised everybody up. And there was so much pride in walking those halls.
Sure.
That they, they had a little pump to their step. And it led now, were those kids, all kids smarter? Or were they just the normal Pendleton County kids that we have? Probably the normal Pendleton County kids that we always have.
Right.
But that year was some of our best test scores that we had during that timeframe. Now, like you said, can't judge now to them because it was a different test score back then.
Right.
Different method of testing. But it, it has to be something to that, I think.
And I think that when you can create that sense of excitement, and whether it's basketball, whether it's, you know, however you can create a sense of community within the school system, getting everyone. And I think that's what, for that year, that's something that brought everyone together, is everyone was excited about this. I don't know that you can create that every single year, but I think as.
That'd be cool to go state tournament up here.
Yeah, maybe we should.
Come on, come to Belgium, get on that.
You know, and, and not that, you know, maybe not everyone rallied around, but those kinds of things that make you feel a part. And that's, I think that's what it is, is everybody was on the same page and it didn't matter. The clothes that you wore, didn't matter what you drove, didn't matter, all the things that often separate us in those moments, you know, come together. And it's bigger than that. And I think, you know, unfortunately, even the negative can be the same.
Yeah.
That when you experience some type of hardship, some type of devastation in a community, in a school, that all of a sudden in that moment, all of those things that we often focus on, all the, the things that we disagree on, none of that matters anymore because there's something bigger that we need to come together for.
Absolutely.
And so not that you want to experience those types of things at all.
Yeah.
But, but anytime you can get everybody together on the same page, I think that it's a benefit and creates an excitement.
And you have to have things for different kids. When I started as athletic director, I made a big point that the academic team should be recognized at the pep rallies, just like all our other teams.
Sure, exactly.
They hated it. They hated being out there in front of everybody. They were uncomfortable.
Yes, right.
Cause they'd never been in those kinds of atmospheres before.
Right.
And it was funny. They're like, oh, we hate this. Don't make us do this. And I'm like, well, we recognize you, all the good work. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Don't do that again.
Just, yeah, right.
It was funny, I thought.
But, and I think that however that recognition comes about, that, you know, that people sense that whatever they're doing in the name of the school, that it's a, it's a big deal.
Yes.
And it's important. How you conduct yourself, whether it's on a basketball court or in an academic meet, or in an archery, or running cross country, or in a club somewhere, you know, you're on a, like you're representing something bigger than yourself. You're a part of something bigger. And so remembering that and the responsibility that comes with that. And so that's, that's another benefit that comes from being a part of something more than just the day-to-day activity. And so that's, that's another benefit that comes from being a part of something more than just the day-to-day activities.
Now, one of the changes that seems to be making the switch back to kind of when you were in high school. When you were at Pendleton County, there was a, a strong vocational programs with DECA, FBLA, TSA, which was the shop class.
Right.
Uh, FHA at that time, FCC LA now and FFA. There was a trend that they moved away from that, but it really seems that the vocational schools, the vocational programs, these career pathways are becoming popular again.
Sure.
Thoughts upon the importance of, of college versus career readiness?
Yeah. So I think back in, um, it was a, a time when you felt like you had to go to college in order to get a job. That that was kind of the mentality. You just gotta go to college, you gotta go to college. And that has changed. The college scene has changed, the training has changed. There's a lot more focus and intensity of, you know, this is the path. If this is the path that you want to go down, it's a direct line. You don't have to do all this, these other things to get, you know, you just get the training that you need and you get into the workforce and you get into, you know, the job that you love. And I think that that's, that's important to have both. So you have the kids that, that may be going on to college. They may be going to a four-year degree or a six-year or eight-year or whatever, and that they have what they need in high school to train them for that, to prepare them for that, that they get the leadership training that they need and the leadership experiences, you know, business leaders. And that's kind of their, and at the same time, just as important as it is for business leaders of America or, uh, or whatever club. It's but, as vital to understand that there are a lot of specialty training jobs that are out there that are needed to help make our community better. And so to have the resources they need and whether that's traveling to the Campbell County or Harrison County, you know, that, those types of things. Or we offer them more in there so that kids can begin to experience, this is what this job does. This is the skills that it takes and, and going down that, going down that path. And so understanding that every kid is different, every kid needs, you know, and, and trying to offer experiences for them to say, you know, I thought I might want to go into this, but now that I've done this for six months or a year, not really my thing, so I might try. And if you can learn that in high school instead of after four years of college and then get out there and say, oh yeah, I didn't really, you know, do that. So I think that that's something that has changed a lot. And more opportunities, more partnering with community colleges and being able to get college credits in high school, which wasn't really a, a thing, you know, back when I was in school, you know, kind of thing. So, so all of those things I think can, can help kids, you know, prepare them for whatever's.
I'm kind of torn on the college classes because, you know, Kristen did it and we saved money by her doing it.
Sure.
But at the same time, they're gonna get to work for the rest of their life. Why do I want them to graduate from college one year earlier? They're, they're gonna get to work for 50, 60 years.
Right.
Okay, so if they get to work for 49 years because one year you didn't earn it. So I'm kind of torn there.
And I get, and I see that, you know, that it's like just, you know, that sometimes you want to just be a kid, take another P E. Take an easier schedule. But, but if you can get that, I mean, for a lot of, you know, there's a lot of kids that graduate high school and they're already a sophomore in college. And if you can save yourself that money, especially not guaranteed a job outside of college. So, you know, you have a lot of kids that go to school for four years, graduate with a ton of expenses and don't get the job that they thought that they were going to get out of that. And so, you know, there's some long-term benefits from that. And I think there's kids that say, hey, I want to do this and I want to go after it. And, uh, and it's good just to have the opportunity. Or if they say, you know what, I'll do college when I'm in college or I'll figure it out after I graduate. I think that's, that's a fine, you know, that's, that's a fine plan too.
Well, let's talk about salaries a little bit. Um, we've lost, you know, all the time, we lose teachers who go up north where they get a little bit more money in Campbell County. Good, good teachers too.
Sure.
Campbell County, Kenton County. Uh, my wife applied one time over at Pine or Elementary. It's gonna be a $12,000 a year difference. Um, that's a lot of money.
Sure.
12,000, that is a thousand dollars a month.
Yeah.
So as you look at, but, you know, and, and we struggle to get substitute teachers and, and bus drivers and sub bus drivers. You know, where do you, where do you find that money? How do you find that money? What is the importance to make sure that we're as competitive as we can be with salaries?
I think, I think what we have to offer, uh, from my perspective is I don't know that we'll ever be able to compete salary-wise with the, you know, Campbell County, it's a growing community. There's houses being built, people are moving into that, that kind of area that doesn't really happen here very often. You know, especially like, it seems like we lose more people moving away than we get people moving in. And so really the, the thing that I feel like is different is having a, a, a mindset that, yeah, I may not be making what I could make somewhere else, but I'm a part of this community. And that's what you really have to offer. And I think that that's why you see a lot of, uh, people who've grown up here. Who have chosen to stay here, to raise their family here. And so they choose to be a teacher in this school system, knowing, yeah, I could go make more money somewhere else, but I like this community. I like the people that I'm around. I like the neighbors that I live with. I like, you know, and so there's some benefits that, not that another county doesn't have that, uh, but it's, it's just a part of giving back to this community and being a part of that community that I think is a difference. Now, I think that you do everything you can to compete. You do everything you can to get the best teachers to do the best, the best that they can do. And you, you do everything you can to give them the incentive and the resources they need to do their job well. And I think that includes salary too. You know, the reality, the reality is, is that this isn't a booming community at the moment. That you don't have a lot of families moving in, you know, from outside places. You have a few to do that. And so it's just making sure that you're doing the best that you can with the resources that you have.
Gotcha.
And understanding, and I think teachers, I think that they understand that, you know, that you're not just working for a paycheck. You know, that what you're doing, and I think that teachers experience that on a basis where whether it's a kid that comes back 20 years later and says, hey, just so you know, I wanted you to know that you impacted my life. You may not have known it then, but you did. Those are the kind of rewards I think that you get as a teacher in a smaller community that, that you may not get other places. But I think that it's important to keep morale up with your teachers. I think that incentives are good for that. And anytime, anytime that you can, you know, give them the encouragement that they need, whether that's salary-wise or whether that's just in, you know, in conversations or whatever, that they know that, that they are appreciated and they know that we value what they bring, not just in the classroom, but to, to help our community be.
Yeah, I think it goes back to what you said with getting the right people in the right place. Cause you have the right leader at the district level at each building.
Right.
Who is doing those kinds of things, then your competitiveness and salary is not as easy as, uh, an issue for them to latch on. When you feel underappreciated, then you automatically have something to complain about because of the salary.
Yes.
But when you feel appreciated and, and they're noticing the extra hours and the extra time that you're doing, it's, it, it's not as easy of a jump to go over here, and they don't pay me enough too.
Right. And, and I think that that happens in any, any job field. I think any job is that way of, yeah, I could go make more money, but it's gonna create more time. And I'm gonna be around people that I don't know, people I don't live beside. Are those factors, is that outweigh the money? Maybe for some. But I think the teachers that we have are established people in this community. People who choose to raise their families here, choose to work in this community and be a part of that. And I think they understand, yeah, there may be, money benefits other places, but what I get with being close to home, what I get with my kids being in this community is worth, is worth a lot as well.
Okay. All right. Um, as you, you're elected, you start January 1st or whenever the first board meeting is in January. And they'll have ones usually the second, third, and, and you do the swearing in. Let, let me make sure here. Because one of the questions you will be asked if you win the election is, have you ever participated in a duel?
I have not. If I had, I would not have run.
Right. That question just absolutely cracks me up.
Right, yes.
But when you're doing that, as you start this four-year term, what's going to be the biggest issues facing Pendleton County schools?
Well, I think, you know, I think that the biggest, the biggest issue right now, I think, is, you know, is the, the transition that we have of a new superintendent. That, um, and, and I'm excited for, for Mr. Berkeley because he's been a part of this community. I think that, that brings so much to his, to his responsibilities that he knows this community, he knows the people here, and though there may be a downside to that. But I think his transition, trusting his decisions, giving him what he needs, the confidence that he needs and the freedom that he needs to do his job and to do it well. I think that's gonna be one of the biggest, uh, the biggest transitions.
Okay.
To this, these first few years of establishing, you know, his setting the tone for this community, for the school system as a whole. People rallying around him, which seems to be happening even in a very short amount of time already, that there's a lot of things to appreciate uh, about that. There are a lot of things that will need to come, a lot of issues that will come up that maybe we don't even know about yet. But again, my philosophy, you get the right people in the right positions, then that makes the biggest difference. And it feels like to me that, that it's a good fit with Joseph and so, and, and just supporting him, giving him what he needs, allowing him the freedom to make some decisions and, and to do the job and to do it, to do it well, is going to be one of the biggest things that I think that we can do as a school board. That when that gets right, that's gonna, that's gonna affect a lot of other issues. Uh, I don't think so. I mean, you know, I've, I've enjoyed the conversations I've had with people along the way, the questions that they've asked about, you know, things that I believe about tax increases, you know, that was a big, a big thing that, that people have asked me, what do you think about increasing taxes? My answer is, it is, uh, it, it, it's irresponsible to increase taxes just because you can.
Yeah.
Just because you have the ability to do it, doesn't mean you have to. That's irresponsible. It's also to think that you never have to, to think that the changes that come from Frankfurt, that you can just continue with the current budget that you have when they make so many cuts that drastically affect us. It's, you, you know, it's just inevitable that at some point those funds have to come somewhere. And things that they cut that may not affect a Jefferson County or a Fayette County, things like transportation. So they come from the state level to say, hey, we're cutting the transportation part of the budget by this much. Well, to those schools, they may be able to say, ah, no big deal, we'll, we'll make do. In a community like ours where we depend so much on transportation.
Well, you're in the Highlands, they don't even offer transportation.
Right. We don't have that option.
Yeah.
You know, and so what do you do? Now do you start taking away from things like extracurricular activities, things like, uh, you know, those types of clubs and things and say, now you can't do extracurricular because we got to get kids to school.
Yeah.
And, um, and so, you know, again, irresponsible just to raise it because you can, but to think that, that it's never gonna happen. And I think the school board has done a very good job in the past. I mean, they haven't raised it for several years.
Well, the last two years they have. They've taken an increase the last two years, but it was several years before that.
Between that, yeah. So, you know, so, but that, a lot of that is dictated by what comes. And I think that that's what a lot of people don't see. Is why are these increases coming? And to sit down with a school board member or to sit and read, here are all the cuts that are coming from Frankfurt. And when you see all these things, you gotta, you know, and again, you want to create the environment where kids are learning, where teachers feel like that they are valued and appreciated. And so, uh, you know, just, but it's not something that, again, you know, it's irresponsible to think that you're gonna do it every single time just because you can.
Yeah.
But there are gonna be times that, that that has to happen. And I know that that's a, I mean, I don't, I don't want that, you know, I'm paying that, that same tax and I don't, you know, I don't want that and it's hard for me. But as a part of the community, I realize that a part of my responsibility in this community is to support the school system. And sometimes my tax dollars is how I do that. And, uh, and so just accepting that and understanding that's, that's a big part of it, so.
Okay. All right. Guess you'll be attending a few crowded basketball games this year.
I plan on being a part of a few crowded basketball games this year. Yes, I am.
Yeah. Noah is his son, is on the basketball team, on the golf team also.
Yes.
Well, thank you for coming out. Thank you for, uh, coming down from Maple Avenue. A little time talking about education. And as always, we thank you all for, uh, making it to the end of the video. If you made it to the end of the video, you get a gold star and a thumbs up. But appreciate all the time you've been spending. And I know you get tired of hearing my voice, so I won't belabor this anymore. Thank you all. Make sure foundwithoutlook.com to go to the videos. Don't go to YouTube and watch them. Support your local businesses. Go to foundwithoutlook.com to watch the videos. It helps us out. Thank you very much.